Good morning, everybody. If we could please have you take seats, please. Thank you very much. Good morning. This is a special meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. At this time, if you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting. It is not a public hearing. Certainly, the Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested attendee to raise question or make comment on the matter that is before us. Today's meeting is a continuing conversation about the request for municipal improvement status for New Lebanon Elementary School. Before we get underway, I just want to acknowledge something very favorable to the town, and that is today, the town is in receipt of the $4.49 million from Eversource Energy to the town for the benefit of Nathaniel Witherell. We've been pleased that this partnership was able to come about, and we were just waiting for the clearance of the funds. And we've got Tom Dorsey and Tracy Alston from Eversource. So, thank you very much. And Mr. Ormsby, thank you very much for your leadership, and everybody at the Witherell. Lloyd, thank you for your specific leadership on this topic. We're very grateful. So, we can go home, rest, knowing that the check's been cashed, as they say. And you've got two members of the BET, three, maybe even four, members of the BET here, and I know they're very happy as well. Check that off our list. Great. So, as I think most people know, have been following this issue, there's a great deal of time and care that's been given to assuring that the town and the schools go forward with the best location to build a new elementary school for the Byram community. We have requested that the Board and the school's administration provide us information as it relates to utilization of the existing site that the New Lebanon School sits on for purposes of a new school. And today, we are going to hear an update on the status of that. In addition, we are going to have a presentation that relates to this subject as it pertains to off-strike construction techniques. This is something that has been raised over the last several months. It certainly is something I know very little about, and I myself would be interested in at least understanding it. And Mr. Von Braun has been an advocate for this, and therefore, I made the accommodation as part of today's meeting to hear briefly what that entails and how that can be done. So, that will be secondary to the first presentation as it relates to this subject. I do want to formally welcome to the Board and the dais Ben Branyan, our new town administrator. I can't think of a more fortuitous time to have the former Managing Director of Operations for the Greenwich Public Schools to be part of our town administration. And he's shown to be that bridge between the two organizations. So, welcome, Ben. And, you know, we're delighted that you're here, and I think the audience is delighted you're here. So, you know, kudos to you. So, for today's presentation, Mr. Matten, Dr. McCursie, thank you. We have Jusolfi and Associates as well, Michael Tribe and Peter Jusolfi. But to begin, we're going to call upon Dr. Bill McCursie. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Tessie. Thank you, Selectmen, for calling this meeting so we can really continue to dig into this critical, critical issue. It's critical for all of those who attend New Lebanon now, in the future, but clearly it's district-wide concern, a community-wide concern. It definitely relates to also our relations with the state in terms of the racial balance plan, which the State Board had approved last July unanimously. And part of that is, one of the five parts of that plan relates to New Lebanon. So, it's critical that we keep this moving. So, again, I appreciate the leadership of the Board of Selectmen for looking at this issue. I'll be brief. We have come back, the administration, in very quick order with Scheme D. It's quite a thick set of documents that we've posted. The thickness of those documents is intentional, call it one-stop shopping. We want people to go to one document and have all the information they need, the entire story, Scheme A, all the way through Scheme D, all the analysis in one place. But that means the document is getting quite substantial. But this is a substantial issue. The document does highlight, as Mr. Matten will show you, where there are the particular changes relative to Scheme D, so you can focus in there and be clear on that. What we've brought to you through Jusolfi and Associates is very quick work on what Scheme D, from an architectural standpoint, would entail, but then also with, working with our administrators, have talked about what it would mean for schooling for the New Lebanon children during whatever number of years construction's underway. Because Scheme D is a total tear-down, and then needing to have schooling options for the children while we're tearing down and building a new building. So, we do have in the materials for you two, if you will, options as it relates to where the children would be for schooling. That's a Board of Ed decision, but again, we want you to have full information on that. Here to discuss any of the educational issues, as the Board of Selectmen have questions, it'd be myself, obviously, but more importantly, Dr. Flanagan, and Ms. Riccio, Principal of New Lebanon, are here to provide that sort of information. But let me turn the meeting now, if I could, the dais over, if you permit, to Ron Matten and then the architects.
First off, I'd like to thank you for scheduling the center of a meeting, give us an opportunity to present Scheme D as you've requested. We have two presentations today. One will be Jusolfi Associates will be presenting the Scheme D information, and then we've also brought in Langin, our consultants on the A2 survey. So, first, I'd like to present to you Peter Jusolfi. Within your documents, you'll see there's a change log. So, this is a historic document from when we started planning the New Lab project. And if you look at the change log, you'll see the highlighted pages that have changed from last meeting.
I'm going to move to right here so I can see the images as well as you. What we're doing is a very brief overview of the other schemes and with focus on Scheme D. So, you get to see the selection. And I think the whole process, I mentioned this last night as well, the whole process is to evaluate a series of alternatives. It's never been our task to recommend which one to select. That's entirely up to the Board of Education and the process here in Greenwich. The site analysis looks at the site itself. Here's an aerial photo view. Here's the neighboring streets. This is a map which shows the texture of buildings shown in black. Everything else is in lighter colors. And here, we see the slopes. The darker colors are the lower slopes. And if you look at this so-called ravine behind it, it's about 27 feet down below the elevation of the land on which the current elementary school is situated. That's the footprint of the current elementary school. That's the property that the Board of Education owns that's hatched in red. That's the portion down at the southern end of the wet area, the wetland, which is relatively far. I mean, it's, there's the edge of the school. This is a rotated view, so north now is to your left instead of up, and it shows you the existing building. In a very quick analysis of the existing building shows you the uses on this one-story building, where the blue spaces are the communal spaces like the gym and library and cafeteria, and the classrooms, as you can see, are in the tan color, and the red is administrative space. That, by the way, this will come up again. This is the cul-de-sac, the turnaround that gets you back and forth on the driveway in front of the building. There was a long rationale for where this fits in the plan for the schools, and then another rationale that was developed last summer with the committee we worked with about the kind of building this should be. From all of this comes a program, from the estimates of the number of students, comes a program of space requirements that is in your documents and leads us to a building of 58,000 square feet compared to...
Thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand in the existing building. And then we come very quickly to site options, and really, when we started, it was all looking at additions to the existing school. We then started looking at site, what we've called Site B, which is the playing field adjacent to the Byram Schubert Library. And from that, several Scheme As and several Scheme Bs emerged a preferred Scheme A, which you see there. That's the addition. And emerged a, that's Scheme A, emerged a preferred Scheme B, which would look something like this. Now, remember, these aren't designs. These are just massing diagrams. That's Scheme B. This is a plan of Scheme B. Scheme C, which came up after the presentation of Scheme B. The public was worried, or some portion of the public was worried, about the taking away of the field, and the suggestion came, could we have another scheme that put the building south of the field? That's Scheme C. There you see it on the site. And this is what it looked like in a massing drawing, where this is the field, this is the library, and to the south of the field was the building. We were then asked to consider Scheme D, which would be a replacement of the library on the site. And the first diagram we came up with was basically substituting a two-story footprint on the site plan as it already existed with a cul-de-sac just the way it was. That seemed counterintuitive to us as we looked at this on day two or so. And we then came up with two different schemes, which are still Scheme D, but they're more developed. And you'll notice, if I go through this, that there's a driveway, I'll go back. There's a driveway here which comes down, and we put the cul-de-sac, the turnaround, down at the end. The purpose of that was to get the fire truck all the way down the road, which wasn't possible in the current scheme and the way it is currently. And there's also, on this side, a driveway that goes along on the eastern side of the proposed new school. The other thing that you might notice is that in this configuration, the library cafeteria is in here, the gym is about there, and there's room on the west side of the building for a playground up at grade. And these are the plans. This is a two-story building, and think about it, you're going from 37,000 square feet to 58,000 square feet, but you have some double-height space in the gymnasium. That's about 5,000 square feet. So, it almost takes the footprint of the other. Not quite, obviously, but it's about 30,000 square feet for the footprint compared to 37 for the existing. And what we get is space out here to be in, on a playground or something of that sort. And this is a graphic, three-dimensional, showing what the, this might be the playground space, obviously without diagonal paths, but this would be the massing of the building. Two stories.
That's what that picture represents right there? Can you go back to that for a second?
Yeah. So, that was the second story and the first story?
Okay.
Yeah, that would be brick or something, and this was glass. We then tried one other scheme, and it, this is not with a tilt in it, but with a shift. And the shift is here, is that this would be the gymnasium. This is the spot for the library and cafeteria. And we get an outdoor space for playing out here and another one out here facing down towards the lower land. The reason for that was we were trying to get a kind of an early childhood, end of the school, and then the older children in the other part of the school. So, that would give us a, two places that would relate to kids playing outside. Okay. It's stuck. There we are. We should show them as little circles, but there would be a play space out here and a play space out here. This is the first-floor plan, and you can see these are regular classrooms in groups of three. And then there's the second floor up here. That's the second floor open of the gymnasium at that end. Doesn't want to respond. There we are. And this is another sketch showing a two-story building. And in this case, there would be a playground, and then in the back, towards the ravine, would be another playground on the east side. This centerpiece here is where the library cafeteria is. The gym would be over here. We had a scheme with, oh, they come at the end after the cost.
So, these are some of the same documents you previously saw. This really had to do with the calculation in terms of what the square footage is allowed for the grant and how that came about. It's a similar document. This is a new, this document you already had for Scheme A, B, and C, and we've added options A, B, and C, and we've added Option D at the end here. These are the field costs and building costs. And you'll notice that on the top line, when you compare, and it's hard for you to see it, but if you have the document, you'll see the difference, between C and D, the cost of site work around the building has lowered by about half a million dollars, a little more than half a million dollars, because obviously, it's a simpler area to work in. Field costs are exactly the same. The next document compares the building costs, actually building it on the properties. And here, when comparing B, D to C, the value of D went up because a two-story building has more exterior wall surface and more roof surface. So, that cost goes up slightly. C was a three-story building, so it's a more compact building, the same as B. Both of those were compact. And then this last chart, that nobody will be able to read, sorry about that. It's the one that compares the costs of what the grant covers and what the local funds cover. So, if you want, I'll give you the bottom line, and I'll read it through. So, for Option A, the grant from the state would be 19 million, and the local funds would be 9,700 and change. For Scheme B, the state grant is 23 million and a half, and local funds were 10,900,000. For Scheme C, Scheme B, Option B, state grant is 23,550,000, and local funds 10,900,000. It should be in the documents. We can run copies of this if you want now at the end of the meeting and pass them around. So, going on to Option C, the state grant funding would be 22,900,000, and local funds would be 8,900,000. And for Option D, the new one, this is where the new information is, the state grant is 23,500,000, and local funding would be 9 million. To that, at the bottom, right here, which is very hard to see, we've added the relocation costs, and that makes the local funding go up to 9,900,000.
Dialing back to the various plans, under the scenario of the D plan and utilizing the existing site, could there be an incorporation to, you know, one of the comments that we've heard in one of the merits of the prior plan was that you were bringing the gymnasium down to grade level with the field, and it would reduce the amount of travel time between the facility and the field. Is there a way to incorporate that component into D where you put the gymnasium in closer proximity and elevation to that field?
As far as we know, the rock is very close to the surface there, but it's a question, really, of getting the right test borings and finding out. So, we don't know yet, but it's certainly an idea that's possible. It's an idea that's possible. It looks, when you're up there, like it would be quite difficult, but I'm not sure. Is that fair, Michael?
I would just say, personally speaking, I'd like to see that considered because I think that addresses one of the recurring comments that I've heard from folks about the merits of the prior proposal. That was one, they said, "Well, it would bring everything in close proximity to the field and give a much more, perhaps, community sense to it." I don't see them being mutually exclusive to having D with that position in a way that it's accessible. It'd be nice to have that more, given more certainty. And I recognize, we're looking at the concept, but when we get through with evaluating the concept, we want some degree of assurance that it's able to be implemented. I mean, that's clearly going to be left up to the Building Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission and so forth, but at least we know that it has a...
Go back to the plan, though. There's a potential, here it is.
What you're speaking of is taking that space and dropping it one floor. That would mean that it would be closer to the elevation of the field to the north. The difficulty is the youngest children are supposed to have access to that directly. And of course, we've now put that on the floor level of the kindergarten and the preschool, and they can just walk right to it. The question that would arise if we drop it a floor is that more people are traveling greater distances to get there. So, I just, we have to go back to that and sift through, how many extra stairs you need, or do you need extra stairs? Would it be permissible? But we've actually put the playing surface of the gym at a level where no children are in their classrooms if we did that.
So, when in this convoluted process, the first Selectmen, when will we get a definitive on that? I mean, after the MI, when it goes to P and Z?
I think it, depending upon how far you go here, it just means more study. I could see it would be something that would come out through the MIA process right away would be a first study to see if that worked.
Yeah, the only other possibility would be to move the gym, this is going the wrong way, down the hill a little bit, and then there would be access from the school. Here we go. Kind of bring it more into this area, and then you would have stairs that would access the building instead of where it's shown in this location. Move it over a little bit just beyond the rock escarpment and find a way to make it work.
That's basically what I was rooting for.
But it could be, it could be done.
Yes, it could be done. It needs to be studied.
You're not saying no.
No, of course, of course.
In pointing out the arrangement on the site, this is the existing field, that's the library, that's the long driveway with the turnaround at the end. This is parking for the school. We've located that at the southern end of the playing field, so you do need parking there. We've taken, we've moved the whole building to the south and taken out the parking that's on that. You know, there's currently parking over there. There's a little bit of parking there.
Thanks. Excellent question. Yeah, it's not, there we go. Just want to get past the charts. This next document really has to do with the relocation costs. There's two parts to it. The upper one has to do with purely relocating the students to other schools and what the cost would be, and it's mostly busing, and there's some savings in utilities. It's 1,190,000. The second part of the chart, the lower part, is considering building temporary modular classrooms, possibly at Western Middle School, and that adds cost, and that was 2,009,000 when you add all the costs. So, that just gives you a comparison of moving everybody to one location versus sending them to different schools.
A million-dollar difference.
Yeah. And this chart comes from Ron that describes exactly how that relocation...
Just on the previous chart, there's a typo. It's eight buses at 4:35 a bus for 180 days. The current chart was developed by John Curtin, Board of Ed, which would send New Lab kindergarten through one to North Street, New Labs grades one and two to Parkway, I'm sorry, two and three to Parkway, and New Labs grade four and five to Western Middle School.
And the modules, in terms of placement, or someone, Western, you're considering Western only, or is the field, I mean, here's the point, if we're to go to modules, it has to be at Western? Is that the...
Well, we, from the previous modulars that were at Western, we have the, the utility hookups are still there.
Okay.
So, it would make economic sense to go back to Western.
Okay, okay. And what would just, I guess, if you were to put the modules on the field, I'm making this up, the cost factor in terms of the hookups and stuff, we're talking significant cost? That's why you're choosing Western or no?
There would probably be maybe another 60,000, 70,000 dollars in cost to get utilities over to modulars.
All the sewer pipes, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
Plus, the Selectmen had requested that we try to keep the construction not close to the school in our plans.
Yeah, okay.
So, that would be putting the children back...
Back to there. Go ahead.
I have a question for the legal department as it relates to municipal improvement, and that is, should the decision be made that modulars will be utilized, does that request to house those modulars at Western Middle School on Western Junior Highway require another municipal improvement request?
Yeah. Good question. Chris, Chris, we love that you're here, but we're not going to turn it into a comedy hour today. There's too much that's at stake. Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. John Wetmore from the Town Attorney's Office. If I understood the question correctly, if part of the presentation that's made to the Board of Selectmen involves, as we see it, Scheme or Plan D, modulars being placed at Western Middle School, that would, in my opinion, require an MI, but that does not mean that that couldn't be one MI that could be shown as part of what's being done in order to do the work at New Lebanon School. And historically, when we put the modulars up, when they were doing the work at Glenville School, it was done in a similar way.
Thank you. Great, thank you, Mr. Wetmore. I also just wanted to acknowledge with us today, we have Town Planner Katie DeLuca with us, and I thank you, Katie, for being with us today.
Last image, I wish we brought the site plans, but just to show you the things that have been considered. The first was expanding the existing school by putting an addition down in the ravine. The second is building adjacent to the library on the open playing field.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. Forgot these. Okay, so we had one and two. Scheme B was building on the field adjacent to the library and putting a field to the south of it. That creates kind of a library-school campus. It would be at the northern end of the ravine where the grade is pretty much about the same as the grade on the field, because the field isn't anything like as much as big as the whole building. Then this is the scheme that put the building at the northern end of the ravine, and this is the scheme that puts the building up on the existing elementary school site.
And again, it may have been repetitive in there, but just to put a fine point, under all four scenarios, the ed specs, as adopted by the school board, are achieved.
Accommodated, absolutely.
And the square footage is essentially the same.
It's approximately the same, yes. There's little... There's little, little differences back and forth, depending on the number of floors and things of that sort, but they're essentially identical. The ed specs are, as far as we can understand from the point of view of the state, what we're doing is we're, we're building a building of about fifty-eight thousand square feet with approximately the same budget on three different locations on the site that the Board of Education owns.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions?
I've also forwarded on to the Board of Selectmen the A2 survey that you had requested, and I've invited Ryan Wallstrom from Langen in case there are any questions in reviewing the survey.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. So our survey staff engineer is getting the survey over here. We should be very brief, but as Ron says, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Okay. Come on, bring it up here, Joe.
I think, yeah. I think we do.
This is Joe. I'll take the lead on describing really the elements, but as mirrored in Judge Sophie's surveys or aerial photographs, you have the total boundary surveys around the edges here. This is ninety-five, so north is up. The baseball field is here. Go ahead, Joe.
How are you doing? My name is Joe Stublak. I performed the land, most of the land record research for this parcel and a majority of the field work as well, and created this map. So the property owned by the town is broken up into one, two, three, four, and then five lots, but most of this lot here is the parking lot for the library. Excuse me. And so we have this lot here, which is approximately 2.9 acres, which the current school sits on. To the east of that, we have, which is the wooded lot that abuts ninety-five, is 3.6 acres, which has a paper street on it, which means it's, it's a street that was conveyed as a public road but was never built. And I have found no documents showing that this southerly portion of New Lebanon Avenue has been discontinued. So it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's still, it's a road, but a paper road because it's not built. And basically the same thing with the northerly portion of New Lebanon Avenue where the baseball field sits on top of. It's a paper road, and no documentation have I found that abandons it or discontinues it. So we have those two lots, the southerly west and east, and then we have also this lot here, which is a half acre in size, which abuts a few homeowners and where the field is, and another 0.6 acres of mainly just field grass. And that's pretty much it. Any questions?
I just had one question, I mean, which perhaps is obvious already, but in looking at it from a land utilization point of view, do you have any opinion as to which parcel available yields the best outcome from a, from a topography and so forth?
Well, where this paper street is, is pretty much where that ravine lies, and it does go up in elevation and somewhat levels off before you hit the property line here of ninety-one, or ninety-five, rather. So I'm...
So really, in any of those schemes presented, these paper streets would have to be discontinued by the city, but that's really just an administrative issue, and it would not be an issue from the redevelopment. From a topographic standpoint, we have bedrock outcroppings, and really all around the east of the existing stool, school, which wouldn't really limit anything from a geotechnical design perspective.
Great. Yeah, I have a question. It's also from, for legal. This is incorporating one site divided into four options, correct? Correct? So the question, yes, so the question in terms of the legal part, when, in terms of the MI process itself.
The whole thing is one site.
Correct.
You're looking at, the options are where on the site do you...
Correct, but from the legal point of view, once again, I just want to reiterate again, in terms of what has to present, presented to us is a, they're presenting us one site, but specifically there's four choices. Can you talk about that in terms of, once again, to clarify the MI process itself in regards to this? In terms of being site-specific or actually choice-specific, really, not site-specific? There appears to just be one...
Again, I think this is a good opportunity based upon Mr. Marzullo's question to restate what the role of each of the entities are for public edification.
Absolutely.
It's often perhaps lost in the...
Of course. My, my understanding of what's being discussed today is that pursuant to the Board of Selectmen's request, the last time you considered whether to refer the municipal improvement approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission was that the Board of Education returned to you with specific information about a different proposal, I guess we've been calling them, in this case, Plan D. I think that's what's being presented to you now. It's my further understanding that at a future meeting, the Board of Education will return to you with an MI request after hearing all the feedback today, that I won't speak for them, but will likely include some form of Plan D, and at that time, they will request MI. And in addition, pursuant to our zoning regulations, they will also accompany that with a preliminary site plan application for the commission to review at that time. To address your specific question, there seems to be concurrence, I don't think this is an issue for anyone here, that when the Board of Education takes its subsequent vote on this and makes its final determination, it will come back to you with a preliminary site plan, which would show, as any site plan would, where on the property the pertinent structures are going to be located. And that's, of course, a necessary element pursuant to our regulations for the commission to give this its proper consideration.
And when can I just have, John, a follow-up with that, too? With the Building Committee, if, if and when the Board of Education votes specifically on the option...
Yes.
With the Building Committee being voted on by the RTM on Monday, if that option were to change again, once again, that has to come back to the Board of Selectmen, correct? The Building Committee is not...
If there's going to be a, I would call it significant or substantial change to not only the site plan, but the entire concept of the MI, then yes, they would have to come back. It happens on a regular basis during construction, and the Town Planner's here to bear it out, and as are the experts the Board of Ed has brought out here today. Sometimes you have to make changes. The first selectmen made a reference to it. If they hit a lot of ledge and they can't do what they originally proposed to, they've got to come back and amend, modify. In our case, the site plan, it has to go back to the commission, and they'd have to approve that. It would have to be in accord with our regulations. And to the extent it affected the municipal improvement concept, then they'd have to bring in a new one as well. But in all likelihood, once the MI is granted, the only changes you're probably going to see are site plan changes going forward.
Okay, so once again, to be clear, so if this, if this board were to vote approval for D or B...
Yes.
And the Building Committee, whatever reasons they want A or C again, that would have to come to this, back to this board, correct?
From what I've just observed, that would be enough of a change to the site plan that they would have to come back and get another, a modified site plan approval at a minimum. Yes.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions? Again, thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation and the completion of that A2 survey, which was something that not only we desired, but I know that there were members of the BET, in particular Mrs. Tarkington who was here, wanted to see that.
So I, I hope we've answered all your questions today, and is there a quest for any additional information?
I think if we could just generally think about the next steps, the timeline in which we would envision this moving forward, we know that the Building Committee will be acted upon on Monday, the eighth. And then perhaps Ms. O'Neil, as chair, you could perhaps articulate for us how you envision this moving forward. As you know, we're, we're looking to, from our end, accommodate with special meetings and so forth to get it approved.
I know, I think you've been very good, and I think you've been very thorough. And the hope is that next Thursday, that our next meeting, our next business meeting, that we would be voting on a site, and then that would come to you for, as part of the MI process.
Okay.
So that's our hope.
Okay, well, we, we stand ready, and thank you.
Well, Barbara, can I ask a... I do, but I have to, I have to ask, yeah. In terms now, to be, our consistency in terms of voting on the MI, what we have required in the past is environmental testing. So the question is, if your decision, your board decides D or B or whatever...
Or Q.
Yeah, Q, yeah, exactly. But go with, go, but go with D for this because we've already got environmental. So are we going to require some environmental testing for D? And what's...
My understanding, and Ron can speak to this better than I can, that we do have as much information for B as we do for D.
We do, okay.
But he can fill it in.
Good.
We've done, we've done preliminary site investigation on the site of D at the start of this. So we do know that there are two underground tanks. We've tested around those underground tanks, and they're clean. I believe there's two other samples we've took from that site, and they are also clean.
Well, that's good.
Great, thank you. Thank you, that addresses that. Okay, the next, the next portion of the meeting was set aside to have a presentation as requested to me by Mr. Von Braun. I just want to be clear in terms of that. I recognize that we all work through boards and that, you know, whatever the decision of the board is, is what carries forward. I have, in a sense, obliged your request, really as an individual who happened to sit on the board, for whom has brought forth an idea that relates to this particular subject that may have merit. The fact is, it's been talked about, yet we have not had the benefit of understanding it clearly. And I've learned that, you know, we can choose to set aside and not be responsive and thus not perhaps learn something, or we can make that accommodation, have it vetted, and then decisions will be made and we can move on. And so today, I just want to be clear, because I know there may be organizationally some unease with the way this has come about, understand, it's about really understanding what is involved with off-site construction. Does it have merit to it? Does it not? Ultimately, it's something for a Building Committee to decide, but given our interest in this whole subject, I thought it was beneficial to have it brought forth and explained in a perhaps a little bit more expansive way. And you're going to understand, introduce some folks to talk about it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate the opportunity to bring this informational session to you and to the public this morning. The comments will be made today will be from Ray Lee, who is the representative of NRB, which is one of, is the largest off-site construction manufacturer for schools in the United States and Canada. John Bonjorno, who was, would be their field construction manager, so that you can get a couple of points of view as to assembly. And Steve Grasso, who is an architect, has worked with the company to talk about some of the design issues that may be involved. This is not a presentation, and the reason it's not a presentation is that in their prior experience, they made a presentation under these circumstances, and then were deemed as trying to unduly influence the RFP, and were disqualified from any further contact with the project. They also have not had the benefit of onsite visit to, to get a sense of what the situation is there. It is also not site-specific, and the reason that it's worth your time and the public's time right now is that one of the things the community is very sensitive to is time. How, if there's going to be displacement, how long will that take, regardless of whether it's to other schools or to modulars onsite or at Western Middle School? The shorter that period of time is, the better off the students will be. That's one of the major advantages of off-site construction. The others are quality, environmental control, and to an extent, cost. But not having been on the site, it's going to be very difficult for them to provide any detailed information about cost advantage. At this time, if I may introduce the gentleman, to ask questions as opposed to make a presentation, or answer questions as opposed to make a presentation.
Great, that is, thank you, Mr. Von Braun. You know, in, in listening to this, I mean, it could be very beneficial, thinking more long-term and about other facets of community, should the need unfortunately arise where we, we lose a facility due to a fire or a natural disaster, to know that this option exists for replacement of other structures. So again, I see it from a more global and broader perspective, and I was curious to find out more, and I think my colleagues did as well. So welcome. You know, perhaps if you can just give us the thumbnail about what off-site construction is, how long it's been in existence, how it compares to more standard onsite construction, and your experience in New England specifically.
My name is Ray Lee, and I'm with NRB. We are basically a builder. We are an off-site builder. The word modular has been used in a couple of presentations here. That's really not our business. There are people in our industry that build the temporary modular buildings like you're talking about in one of your, one of your plans, and they're wonderful people. They, they do a lot of lease work. Some of the stuff stays permanent after it's been used. We are basically an off-site construction company. And, and what that means is, we build exactly what would be built, site-built. The, the difference is that we're doing it concurrently with the site work. So a typical project that might take twenty-four to thirty-six months in a site-built environment can be built in sometimes twelve to eighteen months. We like to talk in terms of forty to sixty percent, and it's simply because we're building the building while the site work's being done. We can bring a building to, depending on the specifications, maybe ninety percent completion before it comes to site, and then when you marry the two, you just have a, a short period of time where the two are engaged, and you're, the real key to off-site construction is that time savings. And of course, you're saving the time of whatever other accommodations, busing, rental units that you're, that you're using. But our standards in the state of Connecticut, you are a seal state, and what that means to us is there are a set of standards that Connecticut acknowledges and allows us to build to, so that we literally put a sticker on every one of the modules that we would build as part of the building, and that basically tells your local code people that it has been built and inspected to the specifications for the, for the town, for the state, and really then what your local building people do is just supervise the connections.
To that point you're making, what you are saying, just to be clear, is that it's, it's a uniform standard, whether it's onsite construction or off-site, in that those modulars, modular components are fully compliant from factory versus if the folks upstairs in building have to come out and look at and sign off on each face.
We're going to build to an architect's specifications. If it's concrete floors and steel studs, that's pretty much our business. There are people in our business that are primarily wood builders, but that's, we are a commercial builder, and we do, a lot of our work is education and healthcare. And, and the reason for it in education is because of the time. In a lot of cases, we're doing additions on schools, and we're able to sometimes come in at the end of the school year, add ten classrooms to a building, and be gone before the kids are ready to come back after... the kids are ready to come back after the school year restarts. In the case of a project like you're looking at, obviously, there's a lot more site work involved, and it's not going to be that quick. But we've worked in New York City, we're an approved part of the New York City Modular Program. We work in Alexandria, Virginia, right, you know, the suburbs of Washington DC. We basically build to the same specifications that a site builder is going to build to, because we're all building off an architect's plan. Now, we'll take an architect's plan, the one thing we will do is build a structural steel model off of that plan, that accommodates the fact that we're going to be lifting modules into place. So, sometimes we beef up the steel structure just a bit.
Great. Are there any questions?
And anywhere else in Connecticut that you've done business, or no?
Yeah, we've, we've done some additions in, in Connecticut, and I'd rather, I'd rather not identify the township, but we're within 72 hours here of doing a classroom, a 10-classroom addition, actually a total of 14-classroom addition here in Connecticut. The, the only, one of the things we find in Connecticut is, is you're very brick-oriented. We, at our plant, can do what's called a thin brick, which is a sliced brick treatment. We can actually do that. Some of the projects we do, we will just ship the, the product itself, and then onsite, there will be the brick work, will be applied with a full brick. But we've done it both ways in, in Connecticut.
Can you dispel the, why the, I don't know, I'd say negative, or the second best when it comes to off-site construction versus whatever? Why, why, why is there a, why do people have question marks when we're, you're getting a second product?
Yeah, I don't think that they're talking about my product, because we're an off-site construction company. I think the, the image comes from the rental units, the, the stuff you bring in as temporaries. And, and quite frankly, they're basically built off of mobile home module, model. And, when you say the word modular, that's where everybody's head goes right away, or they're thinking about, you know, a double-wide mobile home that was put together, maybe it had a little more wood in it. And that's not our business. Like I said, 90 percent of our business is poured concrete floors, concrete and steel It's, it's just not our business. And if I blindfolded you, and one of the things, we're different from other people, we don't run a production line, like other modular companies do. We literally build your building at our facility. We build a building, and then we literally break the modules apart, wrap them up, and send them to the site. So, one of the things, and one of the reasons we're able to get to that 90 percent completion, is we've already tested the electrical, the plumbing, we've run water through the lines, we can even not pressure test a sprinkler system, but we can flow test a sprinkler system. And people are able to actually come and walk through their, their, their building. We can build as high as two stories indoors, in a brand-new facility, we're just getting ready to christen. In some cases, we've gone six stories, and in that case, we build two-story groupings that then get stacked on top. We have one of those in New York City right now.
Is there any analysis as to the obsolescence, in terms of construction, life expectancy, or utilization of a, of a off-site constructed facility versus onsite? Is there any metrics?
Not, it's, you know, it's what you're building. If you designate a building to be wood-framed, it's going to probably have a 20-to-50-year life cycle. If you build it in concrete and steel, you know, you start getting to, to the longer life cycles. We're just building whatever the architect drew.
Yeah. So essentially, you're saying it's the same?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no magic to what we do. We don't have any secret materials that we use. We're buying the same I-beams, H-beams, whatever, whatever is designated. Again, with the exception that sometimes we have to exceed the original design, because we're lifting it. So, if anything, our, our product can be a little bit, a little bit heavier than a design.
John, you have a question? Oh, Mr. Drake, who sits on our Board of Finance, if you could come forward, Bill, so your question gets properly reflected in the minutes.
Sure, thank you, just for the opportunity to ask a question. You talked about time. Do you have a rule of thumb about how costs would compare with typical construction?
It's, it's impossible. Yeah, it's, it's impossible to, to talk about price. In terms of cost, you know, if you just use your common sense, we're not buying steel any differently than a large construction company would. However, you know, we do have a more controlled environment to work in, and, and we do have efficiencies that, that allow us to, to sometimes make an impact on cost, but I wouldn't promise that upfront on a project.
Dr. Mcursie?
Just a very quick point. All the way back through the feasibility studies that Mr. Granion ran, and I was very active in, we've been wide open to any of the options, to get to the best solution for Greenwich, best quality balanced against cost. And so, this was discussed, wide open to it. Our understanding was, and this is a great discussion, and I'm glad you put some limits on this, you don't limit yourself getting into this later if you want to bid, is, we were wide open to that, under the purview of the Building Committee. Because we've got to have the best solution for quality married with the cost. So, all the way along, was discussed at the pre-feasibility level, all the way, but said, let's get into the Building Committee, and then all these issues could be on the table. I just want to make that clear in the.
Thank you, that's a point well-taken, and this has been, thank you for your time in coming today, because it has been instructive to us who've heard about it. Does anyone have any other comments? Well, Mr. Von Keisling, and then certainly your next, he, okay, go ahead, yeah, you had raised it.
Hi, I'm Eric Maurer, parent of two at New Lebanon. Thank you for allowing me to, to speak. Also, I got to apologize, I was the guy that phoned in this morning, I was dropping the kids off on the radio, dropping the kids off at Field Day, my wife was talking to me, I didn't realize I was on the air, so hopefully.
No worries, I recognize the voices.
Okay. Hopefully, I can speak a little more clearly now.
Yeah, no, I can appreciate that, I do a lot of things with my kids in the background, and it's just, I'm accustomed to it.
Thank, thank you. So, thank you for taking the time to look at all of the options and trying to find the best solution for New Lebanon students, the Byram community, and Greater Greenwich. I saw the presentation on Plan D yesterday, at the Board of Ed meeting, and I think you'll agree that it is not the best option. As, as you pointed out, New Lebanon's the only school with, without access, direct access, access to the field, and Plan D, at least currently, does not address that. Plan D is, you know, because of the ravine, it's a long, narrow site, so you end up with a long building, running north-south, which has an east-west light, which is not ideal. And, so that's not an improvement on the current building either. So, while reviewing all the options, I really think you owe it to the community to look at Plan B. It's unfortunate, it's not been presented to you yet, the architects are here, you have, you have Plan B in front of you, I really hope that you can look at it. Because there's been a lot of confusion about the previous petition, and that petition is not against Plan B. The petition is for building a new school, preserving the green space in the community, and they don't need to be in conflict with each other. The petitions online, at Greenwich Free Press, give another read, there's no mention of Plan B in that petition, because it had not been presented to the community yet. And people signed the, you know, petition, were not aware that, you know, Plan D increases the green space, nearly, potentially tripling it from 50,000 square feet to 132,000 square feet, while improving the village commons by creating campus-like environment framed by the library and the new school. Plan B is not just a school, but a community hub, creating public meeting spaces, a gymnasium for sporting events, and more. By the time the petition was presented, the architects had already heard and addressed the community's concerns, and presented Plan C, which was simply moving the building over towards the ravine. And everyone was happy with Plan C, not just because it addressed the community's concerns, but it showed that the architects heard us, would work with us to design a new building that works for everybody, addressing everybody's concerns. We have a seven-and-a-half acre site to work with. Surely, Plan C is not the only way to build a school and preserve the village commons, and I believe Plan D is even a worse solution to that, as it compromises our ability to improve New Lebanon. I think you'll find that the New Lebanon PTA, the Byram Neighborhood Association, and the petitioners are in favor of Plan B, and we believe that, that now, with the architect's feedback, they can be designed to address everybody's concerns, preserving, improving the village commons, not building in a swamp, and not disrupting the students, what Plan, in the way that Plan D would do. So, we need a good faith effort to address the state's concerns of racial imbalance and close the achievement gap. In order to do this, we need to build a compelling new magnet school, attract students from all over town. The building itself should be the advertisement, attracting students to our magnet school, and, and we need to move forward with Plan B, so we can start designing a world-class model school for the 21st century. Plan B does not need to be a square building plopped in the middle of the field, what we're currently looking at is a concept diagram. I'm confident that as we work together to design something, we can really arrive at a great solution that addresses everybody's concerns. I mean, maybe imagine, you know, a laminate wood structure and glass, it's very sympathetic to the, the library, with curved roofs, rather than in a radial pattern like the library, maybe in a linear pattern along the site, between the ravine and B, sorry, between the ravine and the field, you know, embracing the field, creating that campus-like environment. That, that can be something that Plan B becomes. We just need to move forward with it and design it. And, and, you know, Plan C is not like the only way to, to address the community's concerns. So, thanks so much for taking the time to look at all the options, and having the imagination to realize a great new building, not just for Byram, but for all of Greenwich, and not settling for the status quo with modest improvements. Thank you very much.
I, I do want to thank you, Mr. Maurer, and you are very well-spoken, and your background is quite specialized and unique, if you don't mind me saying, you are.
I studied architecture at Columbia, Archumi, Lovey Woods, and so I can imagine.
Thank you. And you're with Blue Skies Studios, if you don't mind me saying. So, you know, I think, one of the things I was going to comment, as I look out, in all of our meetings, we have folks who come and listen and participate, but I think if one were to give definition to community, one would take a picture of the audience here today, because represented in the audience today are not only the officials who have the responsibility for the various facets of the town government and schools, but also citizens who have a unique perspective, given where they are in the life cycle, as to, you know, children in the school, volunteers at the library, but it's all encompassing. And I think it's a testament to, to the town of Greenwich, that all of you are here, and, and again, I applaud all the folks from the other boards who have been diligent in attending every single meeting of the various bodies to be informed, the Board of Ed, the BET. And I think, again, it speaks, everyone wants to do the right thing. There's no question about that, and it's a matter of getting to that, and I, I think we're getting close, I really do, and again, I thank you.
Can I, can I, can I just ask a question?
It's Matthew, no, Alex? Matt, I'm sorry.
Matt, can I just, I have a, just on the heels of, I was going to ask this, but Ellen left, and Dr. Mur, if you can address this, in terms of where we're going, because there's going to be some back and forth about B versus D now, but can, can we have your opinion, can you, or, or, you know, specifically busing versus modules, and specifically, the impact of one versus the other, in terms of academic concerns, social concerns, keeping in mind demographics, after programs, et cetera, but, but we have to talk, because what we're going to hear is B versus D now, and if we do it this way, it's going to have these impacts. But we really need to hear from you, in terms of, if there is a difference. Ellen did say.
Yeah, we, Dr. Flannan was here, Ms. Riccio might speak to this quickly, too. In terms of schooling for the children under option D, because obviously, it's a tear-down, you need to have schooling, and depending on the module options, how much time that actually saves, you may be looking at two, four years of schooling where they have to be elsewhere. As we worked through this the last several weeks, and I wasn't here for it, but the administration quickly reminded me, Bill, we have done this before. We've done it with Glenville, we've done it with Hamilton Avenue, so we know how to do this, we know how to do it well, let me be clear on that. The reality is, that D was not on the table, a tear-down and relocation was not on the table of the Pre-Feasibility Committee from the very beginning, because of our concerns about the educational impact of having students away from their neighborhood for as long as two years. Family and community engagement issues are very, very real, we've raised the ante on that in Greenwich, just in the last two years on the achievement gap work, it's a, it's a clear driver. So, that was why D was not on the table. But asked, we brought back, we brought a scheme D, which includes the two options of where students would be in school. My sense is, keeping the children together as much as possible while they're not in their New Lebanon schools is critical. So, the dispersion across three different schools is doable, we've done it before, even this morning, I was at Riverside, an assistant principal there, who had been a principal elsewhere, excuse me, a staff member elsewhere in the district during the Glen Valera, said, we will make this work. We will welcome these children, we will make this work. However, the modular option, which has them together, still as a school, is probably, educationally speaking, the better option. It's a more expensive option, in terms of those units placed outside of Western, but they're all in one place. It's a better option that way, educationally. But let me have Barbara speak to this a little bit.
Yeah, and Bill, and I.
Because the other thing going on is, you'd have classrooms for those New Lebanon children at North Street, classrooms for them at Parkway. You then have the New Lebanon children welcomed, but there are issues there we have to think about, because you've got separate classrooms, separate kids.
But could modules, if you go, if, could, could modules, though, when we have done it before, in terms of the gym, the cafeteria, that will all be worked out?
We can work that out. Let me, let me put it very simply. If you want effective schooling, which we have in Greenwich, you have very effective principals working with assistant principals, with a set of staff and faculty right there, not dispersed.
Okay.
Across a 60-square-mile area, which is basically what we'd be doing, slice it in half, because we're not going all the way east-west. So, I think, educationally speaking, the sounder move is to go the modular route, have them all together, because all the things we try and do during the day, during class, between classes, with staff and professionals, to help them be as effective as possible, they're all together then, as opposed to disperse to several different units.
And is there, and is there any statistical, I mean, kids, and, I mean, I'm sure it's done all the time throughout the United States, in terms of now, keeping in mind, obviously, a different demographic, and we're well-aware of that. However, with that said, modules, in terms of the ability to, I mean, what, what, what effect is it going to have on these kids, if there's any, after two years, in modules? If there's any proven statistics that say there's going to be a detrimental effect?
Let me speak generally to that, and then Barbara can speak from, if it's a quality module, which would have to be, with foundations poured, so we're not getting into the mold issues we had before, again, we've learned from the past.
Yeah.
That these are quality facilities. As Dr. Flannan said last night to the Board of Ed, these would be quality facilities, families and students, and would walk in and say, okay, this, this is a school I'm walking into. If it's a quality facility.
Yeah.
That would be good. I used to work with Chicago Public Schools as, as a philanthropic partner. Modules there, where you, in a sense, are in a mobile home, with dumpsters outside the door.
Yeah.
With the reeking of trash into the room, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about a high-quality space, but that's why the cost you see in there is significant.
Sure, sure.
But that is something to be thought about.
Okay.
That the cost issues are very, very real here.
They are. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't usually dress like this, everyone, but we did have Field Day, so I ran over from Field Day, so, literally, ran over. Thank you. Heal the world. That is our theme for exhibition this year. Anyway, gentlemen, we don't have any statistics drew for you specifically about the impact. I imagine we could do some research into that. But, in terms of talking about either relocation or the modulators, neither of those are really desirable, in, in our opinion, educationally. However, we can do both. I was an assistant principal at Parkway when we welcomed people from Glenville, and it worked out. I think the issue we have to think about for New Lebanon, you sort of referred to it, talking about the demographics and the hardship to the parents, and the other aspect of it being an achievement gap school. We have a high achievement gap in the school, which we've been trying very, very systematically to decrease. We are a Title I school, so we have certain benefits from that Title I, which is certain personnel that really support our children exponentially, and they support them throughout the day in various grades. Could we do it? Could we assign them to certain grade levels for a couple of days, and then they rotate from different schools? We could do a lot of different things, but I think when we talk about achievement gap, we look at sort of the critical mass of addressing it, which involves parent engagement, which involves specific specialized instruction across the day and across people. We look at various different programs we offer before and after school for students that are supplemental and tutorial in nature. So, to, to address the achievement gap, you need to do many of these things at once. We've had some great success this year with the parent involvement and engagement, which has involved a lot of evening programs around curriculum, and directly working to develop parent skills to support their children. We also have run another program, which is a bridge program between the preschools in town and New Lab. So, our feeder preschools have been coming for the. So our feeder preschools have been coming for the last five weeks at night, parents with their incoming, to-be-incoming kindergarteners to go through a various series of learning modules for them and for the children. Those kinds of things are going to be very difficult to manage if children are dispersed. So if we have to talk about dispersion or the modulators, I think keeping the children together, as Dr. Mcursie said, is going to be the most effective for their educational benefit. Neither is desirable, but that would be some of the reasons why we would need to be in one place. Use the personnel we have, have a hub for parents to come to and feel a part of and get engaged in, and allow us to do these tutorials before and after school. The big, huge thing as a hardship for our parents is the amount of daycare that they depend on. That's Bank, as you know, is local, so the K-1 and K-2 students go there, many of them, 70 of them go there after school, walk there with the counselors from Bank. And then the Boys and Girls Club do pick up our older children, three to five, in their vans and give us transportation.
Sorry, talk to me about that again. 70 kids are what?
70 kids are enrolled in Bank after-school program.
Yeah.
So they literally walk there, the counselors from Bank walk over, pick them up, walk them to Bank. That couldn't happen if we're at North Street or Parkway.
And could it happen at a module? Can you extend, I mean, could it stay there?
At Western, they probably would have to be bussed, I would think. I don't think they could walk back from there. That would be an issue we'd have to think about.
No, but that's my point, though, but you just extend the, I get the cost fact, that's a whole other debate, but yes, it could be done, though, you just have to, someone has to pay for the transportation cost, correct?
It could be done to get them to their after-care programs, yes, but how many hours do you want children on buses back and forth?
Sure.
So if they're bused to the school to Parkway, then they're bused to the daycare, you know, you just, there's a lot of...
The modules, I'm not talking, I'm focusing on modules. I said nothing about busing anyone to Parkway, so I'm going back to Western from my point of view. So, but could it be done with the module in terms of extend the after-care programs?
I guess we'd have to really investigate that with Bank. Right now, it's at their facility. Is it possible for them to send the counselors to the modules? Maybe that's a possibility. We haven't gotten that one.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, these are questions that the Board of Ed's going to grapple with. They started grappling with last night as they first heard these ideas, and I'm assuming, I'm not a board member, so I'm not going to speak for the board, but these are things they're going to grapple with as they decide what to vote on in terms of Scheme D.
Sure.
And that's where the administration has said, "There are two ways to think about Scheme D in terms of where the students are." My recommendation from the administration's standpoint, this goes back to the prefeasibility, from the standpoint of neighborhood schooling and the great deep value we place on that, both of what residents want, and then the great educational boost of that, that's why we didn't have relocation on the table. That's why there wasn't a Scheme D till pressed on that. But now with Scheme D, then to say, okay, in that, the modulators, while more expensive, would be the better educational approach because we're keeping the children together, minimizing the dispersion, which will severely undermine our ability to help these students in all the ways that Ms. Riccio has spoken to. But again, the Board of Ed will decide this, they will vote in terms of if it's Scheme D they bring forward, what aspect then of the relocation issue, how will that be managed? But again, that's before the Board of Ed now for them to decide.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pop, Matthew.
Good afternoon, Matthew Pop, Landscape Architect. At the last meeting, I told you why I was against Plan C, and after that meeting, the next day, I prepared what I thought Plan D would look like. And this is the plan right here. I just want to show you quickly, this is the aerial photo I showed you last time. And what I did for my Plan D was I basically took their building shapes for Plan C and placed them where the school is and shifted them to the north slightly. And I'm just going to go over the advantages, I think, of Plan D. But before I go over the advantages of this, I was involved with the, getting the signatures, trying to keep Plan B, the school, off the field. And I think I probably get about 65 to 70 signatures, and everyone I spoke to, I clearly said that the intent of that signature was to keep the school off the town green. One thing about losing the green, that's one issue, but again, if you put the school on the field, there's heavily trafficked roads and there's traffic issues, as you probably are well aware. So here's the plan that I prepared, Plan D. It keeps the school away from I-95, it's the furthest spot, I think, possible. It orientates the school towards the ball field and towards the library. I placed the gym, which was back here, right here, I shifted it, and I kind of pushed it up against the field. So there is a direct connection to this. Again, it preserves the woods, it doesn't impact the woods, you know, there could probably be a small playground, you know, in the northwest corner of the woods if needed to be. It's outside, again, this area, the field area floods once in a while, maybe once every five years or so. Putting the school up high, in that word, that's no longer a concern. Again, putting the school up high, that we're going to have to control the stormwater somehow and renovate it. The higher up you are, the more possibilities you have. Putting the school down low, I'm not sure what you do with the stormwater. I guess it probably gets stumped in the woods somewhere with the detention basin. And just visually, I think having the school up high is visually pleasing compared to, you know, down low. And I believe that this plan is consistent with, you know, the master plan of Byram, which I was involved with, you know, keeping the green, keeping the school where it is. And if you look at this plan, it can be kind of, I have the existing school outlined. It does have a traffic circle in here, in parking up on the southwest corner. There is no loop back here, but there is room for a traffic loop if you needed to get a truck, fire truck back there and to get them to turn around. And one thing, let's just jump over to Plan A. Plan A had the parking here, too, but it pushed the parking right up against the property lines, and it would probably impact about nine houses. I think the parking 60 feet wide, it would have been about five feet off the property line for Plan A. So again, this is my Plan D, and I think this is the best place for Byram, it's the best, I think, long-term solution, I think, is what you're looking for.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for your time again and your interest, and Ms. Erickson?
First of all, thank you all for spending this time and having this special meeting. I know that working collaboratively, we will arrive at a solution that meets the needs of our students, which I know is of paramount concern. Last night, a point was brought up at a Board of Ed meeting that I don't know has been fleshed out today, so with permission, I'd like the architect to address it because it was brought up at your last Board of Selectment meeting relating to the proximity of the school to I-95 and highway noise. So if you don't mind, if he could reiterate what he told us last night, that would be great.
The issue was the question of the sound from I-95, and I should say modestly, we can get people to find out where the sound is loudest. I think it was mostly a concern if you were doing Scheme C. If you were going Scheme B or D, it wouldn't be such an issue, but it did occur to us, if you go back... I don't know which, where the machine is that I'm pointing to, it's over there. Okay. It's going backwards. Here, that's fine. On this scheme, there's a high point along the highway up here and another higher point over here. Is that right, Michael?
Yes.
And there's a spot where the rock is lower, where it appears the sound is coming out, and I think it's in this zone, and that can be checked. But if you notice, all along I-95 in Connecticut, there are sound barriers, and it wouldn't be a bad idea to just test where the sound is loudest and figure out a solution that would shield the school from the sound. Some of it is naturally there already, but it's not continuous. That's just an issue that came up. So I think that could be part of the site improvements.
Are you saying, so what you're saying is that it's mitigated by installation of sound barriers?
Right, and there's some natural sound barrier there because there's that rock goes up above the height of the road, but I think that that should, it would be part, I'm assuming, of the MI process that you'd get there and figure that out.
Yeah.
Get some devices to figure out what the decibels are and that sort of thing.
Certainly, one of the things that should be verified with the State Department of Transportation is their willingness to, as part of this, I don't even want to get into without part of it because their response has been adverse to installing sound barriers, particularly in the Byram community. I think they did install them when they put the weigh station here in town, there was quite a bit of litigation between something group called the Highway Safety Coalition and in the state and the town. But again, I think since it's been brought up, there should be some definitive communication with them as to their willingness to do it, and then I guess it will come down to who pays, because I'm sure the state's position will be fine, you can have it, you pay for it. And again, so...
You notice already, just when I was driving here last night and coming again this morning, there are sound barriers close to you that are wood and falling apart.
Yeah.
And if you drive around the country, you see concrete ones as well that aren't falling apart, so I mean, all of that's an issue.
I think Darien has some nice ones, because I drive up to some meetings, I've noticed they have some nice ones that are concrete, but you are correct, but I think, again, it's a secondary or tertiary issue as it relates to construction and so forth, but we should just verify if that was the direction we went in, that, you know, again, who's going to incur the cost and maintenance and so forth. Because I know people want them, but the reply has been adverse over a course of a number of years, like 10, 20 years.
One for one. It would be an improvement over the present, but it's a one for one.
Dr. Mcursie?
Yes, it is now.
Just, they talked about this yesterday briefly, the transportation cost slash modules, is that reimbursable by the state or no?
We believe that some of the modules may be reimbursed.
It was explained last night that the, actually, Michael, you've got the direct information, why don't you?
So there is no direct policy in terms of the reimbursement for the modulators. There's nothing for the relocation, for busing and so on, but for the modulators, there have been other locations in Connecticut where they have asked for this, where they've done renovations of existing buildings, for example, New Haven, and they have had success.
For the modules, not the bus, not the transportation cost, though?
Not the transportation cost, but yes, the modules.
Okay. All right.
Great, is there any other comments? Yes, Mr. Von Keisling?
Oh, God.
I commend the spirit of New Lebanon community. I am a veteran of the Koskow raccoon run. When the school burnt down Koskow and we were placed in Parkway, as you recall, we had an hour run either way for the kids. It was a brutal amount of time for the community, and I certainly sympathize with it. I didn't bring my, I was their Koskow shirt, but I do have it still in my drawer as a souvenir, as well as some burnt things. I think that this is a unique community school. I'm glad to hear that the superintendent emphasized that this is a particular community with its own specific needs, its own specific characteristics. I believe that the school board, the BOE, has developed a whole strategy around addressing this particular community and its particular needs. They have specially crafted programs for the students. They have addressed the whole family issues, that it's not a matter of just teaching the students, it's a matter of creating the family support system, which is very critical to have the parents come in and everything else, as well as the whole community around it. What you have now is a campus. It's not just a New Lebanon school, it's a complex, a New Lebanon school, the library, Bank, St. Paul, so many ways, and the field itself. It creates a campus, and I think that's an important thing to look at. There are two overarching requirements, it seems, in this project. One is that we keep it local and accessible, and two, the timing lapsed so that we reduce the pain of disruption as long as possible. Those seem to be the two questions. Building Plan D, I think, is probably, when you look at those overarching requirements, and assuming that any of these, as the superintendent said, whatever plan you pick, we're going to have a good quality school that fits the Ed specs. So it's a question of which school we get. It really comes down to site now, we're going to get like type and kind wherever it goes. It's the, for every decision, there's a cost, a trade-off. In the, if you put the temporary school housing, the modules that we're talking about, on the field itself, you will then maintain the community, the kids, the community, for the community impact is basically the same as having the school, so instead of walking up the hill to the school, they walk down the hill to the field. This is a walking community, more so than even Koskow. They do not have access to transportation around the town, and particularly automobile, if you dispersed them for any reason, that would be a complete hardship. You would basically eliminate a lot of the parent involvement and the very important support that's required to keep this community whole and healthy, especially with the overarching challenges of the achievement gaps and the peculiar needs there, which require a full unit approach, not just a student approach or a teaching approach. So that becomes critical. The time elapsed, if you use, if you just go the normal process, the superintendent says, I think, two years you were talking about perhaps for the whole process, hard to guess, but, you know, but somewhere in that, we're talking one to two years, a long-term disruption of the community. I would remind the board that at the same time concurrently, this community is going to be in distress because their beach is going to be closed for approximately the same amount of time while we redesign, do the pools and everything, the beach.
The beach is open, just to be clear, the pool will be closed.
Well, but I'm saying parts of their...
But no, it's a big difference. I said the beach is...
No, I thank your point, and I'm very sympathetic for that part of town, again, because it's walking, they can walk to the beach, but I'm saying there's a lot going on in that area of town, which is putting stress on the community. So the shorter the pain, the better, as long as we can come out with a quality result either way. If we put the modular on the field, we retain the campus, we have the access, no busing costs, we have the walk-to-school, and we still retain all the support facilities Mr. Marzullo was talking about, if we were at Armstrong, excuse me, at Western, can kids still get to bank programs and everything else? And that becomes more and more difficult, problematic, whereas if you put them on the field, nothing changes, there's the least amount of upsets. The environment on D, I guess, from what we hear, we have a green light basically in the environment as far as pollution or contamination. I would think that we have relatively a green light on the MI and P and Z permits because all you're doing is replacing the same use and structure in the same place. We're putting, we're just basically creating a new building for the school that was there before, in the same way that we're replacing the burnt-down Koskow school with a new school. It's not changing any parameters, it's almost the same, obviously there are issues, but it's basically a much simpler thing. So it's a simpler replacement of the used structure. The other, there's a couple of side benefits. The gentleman said from this company, and I understand they're very cautious in giving any kind of price guidelines for you on off-site construction versus onsite construction, but it's my opinion from our understanding, from what I've heard from some of these discussions and reading, that whilst the off-site construction may not be any less than the onsite's construction, it is more likely to be less and less, I should say, vulnerable to price creeps, cost creeps, as we've had at other schools and that, so it very well may be that this is also a financial savings. But even if it's one for one in cost, the benefits of it, I think, are there. The other, there's a little benefit, a little sweetener for the community. If you put the temporary modular schoolrooms on the field, and we do the stick belt, whenever we do it, but I mean, hopefully in January, that was proposed, they could return to school, that field will have to be restored because it's been disrupted with the modulators. In the restoration of that field, basically, Byram will get a brand-new athletic field that they do not have now, and I doubt that the budget and our very generous BET and their struggles with the CIP, I don't think a new field at Byram's location is at the top of their list. So the sweetener of this would be that Byram, for its pain and agony, at least would get a brand-new athletic field that's redressed, perhaps working with Parks and Rec with some beneficial structures that, you know, bleachers, toilets, whatever, is more possible on this. So I would suggest to you that Plan D is probably the least disruptive with the best benefit, and by the way, it is up on a hill where there's light and air, which I think is much more, you know, we're talking about young children, and I think that is an important thing to have that kind of a light, airy structure. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Kilgallen, and I also wanted to recognize, just as well as Ms. Kiskell, and we have Mr. Goss, both are nominees to our building committee.
Mr. Phil is...
Drake from the BET as well, but he's their appointment, I'm just pointing, but he's part of it, yes.
Hi, just, good morning, good afternoon. I just wanted to ask the architects, because they talked about some things last night that I thought was important. When we're looking at a Plan D, we're looking... looking at a Plan D, we're looking at a lot that only has access from one of the four sides of the parcel. And I just wanted to see if Peter or Michael could speak to what he, what they said last night about the building being attenuated and the difficulties it might present, as opposed to other options that have been put forward.
I think last night, the discussion was going into the realm of what really are things you'd talk about in the future. But one of the, one of the challenges of the D site compared to, say, the B site, is the, is the issue of getting the fire truck down this road and turning around, which you can do, but getting to both sides of a two-story building. And whoever is going to be the architect, one of the, the first things that would be done would be a review of the fire department. I think that on some of the other schemes, certainly the B scheme, you can drive right around the whole building. So it's a different, it's a different situation in terms of getting access. So this, I think...
Okay, can I just say something, though?
We, by the way, I just want to say that the, based on our work in other municipalities, we looked at the fact that you can drag hoses from both sides.
Yes, that, that's what I, I don't want to leave the impression, though, that B is somehow safer than D, until there is a proper vetting of fire code.
I think, no, I think the way I did it last night was to simply describe what we did
Okay.
in order to make it accessible, which is to run a driveway down here, put a cul-de-sac at the end with a turning radius, hopefully that would take the fire truck, and then, on the ravine side, have a driveway which could be a dead end, and then the truck could back up over there.
What about the attenuated building versus the compact?
Well, the, that's just an issue of the two-story on a narrow site. It's a fact of life, that if you're three-story, it's more compact. If it's two-story, it's longer, because you can't spread out in different directions here. That's, that's, that you can design, the remedy for that, of course, was to try and perhaps make a zone of the school, which was younger children. All of these things come out in design.
In our discussions, as part of the feasibility team, we spoke about how the current building, you have to go from one end of the lot to the other end of the lot, and the law, the non-instructional time spent shuttling the children from the library to the gym, to the cafeteria, to the art room, to the music room, because everything is this long attenuated situation, as opposed to, can you speak to that versus the layout and the, and the, I understood there was an increase in non-instructional time, because the layout was more conducive to better movement in a more compact layout?
Okay. I think what you're looking at, when you compare, say, the site that we've called D, compared to the site that we've called B, is one, layout is by necessity, though I just saw another design going on the rocks at the end, is by necessity, I think, probably more elongated, and the other is more compact. That's all. It does, you know, that's a judgment call that the, the schools should make for themselves about what's preferable. I think typically, compactness is favored in some way or other. But it's, it's not, it's not like black and white, and it's not absolute in any way, shape or form.
I'm clarifying with regard to the modulators, on why we want them, or would prefer them at the Western site, is we have support services at Western with regard to a cafeteria, we have a gym, we have a suitable outdoor play space there, and we, as stated before, we still have the utility hookups from the previous modulators. So it is the ideal site for our modulators.
And you have that element of, there are perhaps families with students who have age-appropriate kids at Western. I mean, it practically works. Are there any other comments today on this? If not, we will move to adjourn the meeting, again, with a thank you to all of you who came today to hear the latest updates on a very important matter before the community. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So a second is...
Without objection. Thank you.